Good morning, we now call this council meeting to order. We ask that if you have a cellphone, uh, if you'd be so kind to put it on silent, mute, or off at this time, it greatly appreciated. This time will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decree. I'm gonna start over. Oh God almighty, wisdom and justice through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted and judgment decree. Assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be imminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Amen. I don't know how to work an iPhone, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's just like when you turn it off.
Yeah, it's a iPhone. I'm thinking when it's all the way down, make noise for the pad. That's what I thought it was.
I turned it off.
He turned it off.
I turned it off.
Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams here, Morrigan.
President.
West.
President.
Roots.
President.
Mayor Kirkland.
President. We ask that if you would like to address, uh, make public comments to the council that you sign in at the podium, you're, we ask that you assign your name and your address if you wanted, would like to address, uh, the council at the podium. At this time, we're opening up the, for public comments on the agenda or action items only. Hearing the singing, Madam Clerk?
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby promote the following individuals to the rank of acting corporal slash detective, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, with a ninety-day probationary period. Kyle Battinieri, Astrid Cottrell, and Robert Tickner. So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint the following individuals to the position of patrol officer, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, with a one-year probationary period on a full-time basis with all benefits applicable thereto. Kelly Dodson, Ryan Galinski, Galazinski, hopefully I got it right. Andrew Colmeyer and Brett Foster. Father said patrol officers are required to reside in the City of Chester for the first five years of employment and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department within three months of this date of hire. Thereafter, they may maintain their residence within fifty miles of City Hall. So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Roderick Powell as a member of the Chester Housing Authority Board, term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby engage the services of Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, T.C. to provide legal services as outlined and detailed in the engagement letter dated December fifth, twenty-twenty-two, to represent the City of Chester and City Council in connection to the proposed modifications to the amended recovery plan. Father, it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute said engagement agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Father, said engagement is contingent upon final approval of the city solicitor. So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby engage the services of Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, T.C. to provide legal services as outlined and detailed in the engagement letter dated December fifth, twenty-twenty-two, in connection with the city's bankruptcy proceeding. Father, it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute said engagement agreement for and on behalf of the City of Chester. Father, said engagement is contingent upon final approval of the city solicitor. So moved.
My second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the submission of an application to the Black Equity Coalition Community Ambassador Program to assist with the city's desire to provide outreach and educational services regarding COVID-nineteen and flu mitigation in the City of Chester in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Father said grant shall be in effect from December ninth, twenty-twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. Even further, that it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute on documents necessary for and on behalf of the city. So moved.
My second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams.
Yes.
Morrigan.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Roots.
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, um, we'll move to the swearing of officers. The Constitution, Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
And the office of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Thanks.
Officer Galinski, front and center.
Aye.
Ryan Galinski.
Ryan Galazinski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I would discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer. With fidelity. Thank you.
Officer Colmeyer, front and center.
Aye.
Aye.
And Andre Colmeyer.
Andrew Colmeyer.
Andrew Colmeyer.
Andrew Colmeyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I'll discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer. With fidelity.
Officer Foster, front and center. Good morning.
Aye.
Aye. Brett Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And the Charter of the City of Chester.
And that I would discharge the duties.
And that I would discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer. With fidelity. Thank you.
All officers, front and center.
Thank you everyone for coming out.
That's all you got, that's all you got.
Thank you everyone for your love and support, appreciate it.
So, I just wanna let everyone know, uh, the four new officers started at police academies in July and what the, uh, police academy started doing instead of five days, they actually went to six days. So for the last six months, these officers have been busting their hump day in and day out to get here where they're at today. Officer Dodson and Officer Galinski, actually interns with us from Wythe University. Got a taste of what the pleasing was like seeing the people in the City of Chester and took the test. And Officer Dodson, I gotta give you your props because I got a phone call from Director Davis. She was cut short from the academic award with a ninety-eight point nine GPA all the way throughout. Officer Colmeyer, uh, we're here, um, a prior officer who came out, checked it out, and came on with the City of Chester Police Department. And Officer Foster, who I know his father, who here is, uh, stopping another job that I had. And he said, please see. So I said, I said, I said, no problem. I said, whatever you do, calm down, we'll sit down. He came down, he tilted league, is Roots R. from Chester, and he's here today. Once others individual, I'm gonna call up here, he's probably gonna wanna kill me. Come on up. So, Marlin actually got referred to me, um, from an individual who worked for my mother's water company. Uh, came over to the police station, we sat down for about an hour, hour and a half. And we sat down, I got to talk to him, he said he was all about this. Uh, Marlin, I'm glad to let you know that you will be struck the police academy in January. And by far, I think I'm about to take a squeeze off.
I'm loving it.
Officer Battinieri, front and center. Good morning.
Good morning.
To all those who sell these presents, greetings, knowing that the reposing special trust and confidence and abilities of Officer Kyle Battinieri, I do appoint this officer to the rank of corporal. I do hereby order all those of a lesser grade to comply with all orders given by Corporal Battinieri and sure, and charge Cap. Corporal Battinieri with authority to carry out the orders as given by the, those of a higher grade, given under my hand the twenty-first day of December in the year of two thousand and twenty-two. Congratulations, Kyle. Officer Robert Tickner, front and center. Good morning.
Good morning.
To all who, to all who receive these presents, greetings, knowing that the reposing special trust and confidence and abilities of Officer Robert Tickner, I do appoint this officer to the rank of corporal. I do hereby order all those of a lesser grade to comply with all orders given by Corporal Tickner and charge Corporal Tickner with authority to carry out the orders as given by those of higher grade, given under my hand this twenty-first day of December in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-two. Congratulations. Sure. Captain Morgan, front and center. Officer Catrol, front and center. So, I'm gonna change things up, I'm over here, and I'm gonna pass the reading off to Major Blackwell.
Thanks, you could've told him out of my.
No, I'm sorry.
To all who sell these presents, greetings, knowing that reposing special trust and confidence and the ability of Officer Astrid Cottrell, I will appoint this officer to the rank of corporal. I do hereby order all those of a lesser grade to comply with all orders given by Corporal Cottrell and charge Corporal Cottrell within the authority to carry out the orders given by those of higher grade. Given under my hand this twenty-first day of December in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-six.
Before we go any further, um, sometimes you feel like crazy to somebody in place that you could just beat you down. On a front of devil, this. She taught me the importance of being on time. And with all the masks up and sunglasses, you think that I'm a dangerous dancer. You get to feel it, right? That was great to laugh. Every time I see her, I just think about grabbing my ankles. They don't do that now, but. Call Chelsea.
I didn't even see her.
Corporal Battinieri, Corporal Tickner, and Corporal Cottrell, front and center.
I want to say thank you for this opportunity. Been employed by the City of Chester since May two thousand and nine. I'm very humble for this opportunity, grateful for the foreign raise and educating our city, and look forward to serving us in our new role.
I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity and the trust that you place in us. Thank you.
Good morning. My auntie say don't give a sermon, give a piece. Boy and bread here. I am truly a product of what makes Chester, what Chester makes makes Chester. I'm here to give back to my community. I've been working inside of this community since two thousand and five, I became officer in fourteen. I'm here for the love. Thank you, President, you are our eyes and ears. We only are as strong as you are. You help us more than you know. And we are here to support you and serve you as well. Thank you.
And just real fast, I just need one of these three report ones. Um, Officer Battinieri is pure talent. He's, he's been under three different police commissioners with his honor code. Uh, he works internally. There's probably only one or two percent of the officers in this police department that does what he does, trust me. Officer Tickner, FTO, FOP, constantly going to schools, constantly trying to get better, get smarter, day in and day out, he constantly getting the city what they need. Officer Cottrell, I will tell you this now, I'm always indebted to you because there was a real scary situation about eight years after we were fighting for our lives, and Officer Cottrell saved us. I need to, I need to tell you that now, but was it for her, I don't know if I'd be here today. The faces that you see right here, this is the future of the city of Chester.
Captain Morgan.
The chaplain's swearing of chaplains. Right hand raised. And repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Rosetta Carter.
Do solemnly promise.
Do solemnly promise.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And diligently.
And diligently.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of chaplain for the Chester Police Department.
Chaplain for the Chester Police Department.
And I will provide ministry.
I will provide ministry.
I will provide ministry.
To the officers?
To the officers.
And other personnel.
And other personnels.
Of the department.
Of the department.
And to the citizens.
And to the citizens.
The community.
Of the community.
As I am called upon.
As I'm called upon.
I will strive?
I will strive.
To set an exemplary?
To set an exemplary.
Standard of ethical?
Standard of ethical.
And moral conduct.
And moral conduct.
I will not use my position?
I will not lose, use my position.
As chaplain?
As chaplain.
To prostheticize?
To prostheticize.
Or to gain personal advantage?
Or to gain personal advantage.
And I will minister?
I will minister.
To all persons?
To all persons.
Without religious bias?
Without religious bias.
I will all, I will obey?
I will obey.
All lawful orders?
All lawful orders.
And command?
And command.
Of the officers with whom I work?
With all the officers whom I work.
I shall hold in strictest confidence?
I shall hold in strictest confidence.
All personal?
All personal.
Matters?
Matters.
And official business?
And official business.
Share with me?
Share with me.
I acknowledge those appointed?
I acknowledge those appointed.
In a position of authority?
In a position of authority.
Within the department?
Within the department.
And will serve them?
And will serve them?
With loyalty.
With loyalty.
I accept this responsibility?
I accept this responsibility.
Willingly?
Willingly.
And without reservations?
And without reservations.
So help me God.
So help me God. To God be the glory.
I didn't realize this is that long, so we'll be here all day long. So we're gonna do it just a little different. We're gonna ask.
Are you the first one, each person say their name?
I thought, that's what I thought that.
My tape.
Carter. Apostle Nick Temmons. And Bishop Peter Sonnen. You guys know the Bible?
Yes.
I think I did.
I did, okay.
So. Repeat after me, just state your names. Start here. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, Dr. Elder Julie Heiss Carter.
Peter Sonnen. You solemnly promise?
Solemnly promise.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Diligently?
Diligently.
Perform the duties of chap?
Perform the duties of chap.
For the Chester Police Department.
For the Chester Police Department.
And I will provide ministry?
And I will provide ministry.
To the officers?
To the officers.
And other personnel of the department.
And other personnel of the department.
And to the citizens of the community.
And to the citizens of the community.
As I am called upon.
As I am called upon.
I will strive?
I will strive.
To set an exemplary standard?
To set exemplary standard.
Of ethical and moral conduct.
Of ethical and moral conduct.
I will use my position as chaplain?
I will use my position as chaplain.
I'm sorry, I will not use my position as chaplain.
I will not use my position as chaplain.
To prostheticize?
To prostheticize.
Or to gain personal advantage?
Or to gain personal advantage.
And I will minister?
And I will minister.
To all persons?
To all persons.
Without religious bias?
Without religious bias.
I will obey?
I will obey.
All lawful orders?
All lawful orders.
And commands?
And commands.
Of the officers?
Of the officers.
Whom I will work?
Whom I will work.
I shall hold?
I shall hold.
In strictest confidence?
In strictest confidence.
All personal matters?
All personal matters.
Official business?
Official business.
And share with me?
And share with me.
I acknowledge?
I acknowledge.
Those appointed?
Those appointed.
In a position of authority?
In a position of authority.
Within the department?
Within the department.
And will serve them with loyalty.
And will serve them with loyalty.
I accept this responsibility?
I accept this responsibility.
Willingly?
Willingly.
And without reservation?
Without reservation.
So help me God.
So help me God.
On behalf of the Chester Chaplains Corps, uh, you have before you men and women who have dedicated themselves, um, unto God first, to our police department and our entire community. Uh, please welcome them and greet them, our new chaplains. Thank you Mayor Council, thank you Commissioner, and our police staff.
Okay, somebody else walked away with the bag.
My weapon.
Oh. Mercy, now I get back up here.
I'm doing the COVID nineteen.
Say again?
COVID update?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, Ms. Carter, COVID update? Once again, if you would like to address council, we ask that you assign your name and address on the sign-in sheet, um, at this time, Ms. Carter?
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, Valius Kerr Plan, and fellow council members, as well as residents and members of this community. My name is Rosetta Carter, and I am the Director of Community Health Education, as well as COVID nineteen. Uh, and I will give you the update, follow me, I will just give you a short update because, um, Dr. Renzi, who is the Chair of our Health Board for the City of Chester, he's here. Okay? So the Pennsylvania Department of Health reported one hundred and five positive COVID nineteen cases in Chester since the last council meeting. Research experts believe the number of positive count case cases is undercounted, given the common use of at-home tests. Delaware County is currently experiencing a medi- a medium level of COVID nineteen transmission. According to the CDC, people may choose to mask at any time. You should wear a mask if you have symptoms of a positive test or exposure to someone with COVID, uh, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, at this time, I'll just have Dr. Ron Renzi, Renzi, who is our President of the Chester Health Board.
Thank you, Rosetta. Good morning, Mayor, council people. Residents. So we are, the City of Chester, Delaware County, in fact, the whole country is suffering a, uh, high prevalence of respiratory illnesses, um, caused by viruses. So, SARS-CoV-2 is causing COVID nineteen. Influenza virus is causing the flu, and there's a respiratory syncytial virus that is causing RSV. Some people are referring to it as the tripledemic. Um, all three of these viruses are very common, um, and they are respiratory, so they get into the air, you can breathe them in, you can touch them, and then you can get symptoms. The best way to prevent illness, any one of these illnesses, is the mask. The CDC is recommending that everybody should wear a mask when we gather in a public, uh, forum where we don't know, um, other people and how they're vaccinated and if they have symptoms or, um, maybe harboring the virus. So, um, the mask is still the best way to, um, kind of protect yourself and more importantly, protect people who are around you who may be, um, more elderly, have pre-existing, pre-existing conditions that they can get really, really sick. Fortunately, none of these viruses are tremendously fatal, um, but they can make you very, very sick. So I just wanted to go over that and then just a couple different updates on the COVID nineteen guidelines from the CDC. So the CDC is now recommending that if you are exposed to some, someone who has COVID nineteen, you should put a mask on right away and isolate for five days. And then take a test. So that's just exposure. So if you're standing next to somebody and they tell you they just, they were, they have COVID nineteen, you should put a mask on right away because you could breathe in those viruses and you become contagious. You may not be sick, but you are contagious. So they're asking you to put a mask on right away and test five days after the exposure. That's a little bit different than before. So you're testing five days after exposure. And then if you test positive, you need to isolate for another five days before you can go back into the public, and you have to wear that mask for the additional five days. Now, the problem with these guidelines are, when it says mask, when the CDC says mask, they were referring to a well-fitting mask or what's called an N ninety-five mask. It's a mask that's thicker and it really is tight to your face. Um, healthcare personnel who work in a hospital, um, have to have the mask fitted and tested. Uh, they actually spray stuff into the mask to see if anything will come out. Um, so, um, a well-fitting mask is really important. I know sometimes that's hard to do, but, um, a well-fitting mask is really, really important. So that, that's just the biggest change in the guidelines. It's now, um, if you're exposed, you wait five days before you test. Um, but you have to wear a mask for those first five days, and if you test positive, you should wear the mask for the additional, um, five or six days. Now, as far as going back to work? If you're negative, you still have to wait those five days, right? If you're, if you, if you take a test and you're negative, they still want you to wait five more days before you go back to work. So it could be, since you're waiting five days to take the test, and then you take the test, they're still asking you to stay out for ten days. It's a hard thing to do, I know the hospitals are all struggling with that, that's what they're, they're asking. Um, for workers who test positive for COVID nineteen but do not have symptoms, they're still asking you to stay away from work. You have to wear the mask for the five days and then you stay away for ten days. It's still what they're recommending. So there's a little bit, just a little bit updates on COVID nineteen. Um, good news about COVID nineteen is, it's, um, the number of deaths from COVID nineteen is way down. We have really good medicine, um, we diagnose it much earlier, and people are getting, um, out of the hospital quicker, and, uh, like I said, fatalities are way down. So, uh, we are doing better in that respect. So everybody have great holidays, but keep your mask on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. That of course, Janet. Don't forget your mask then. Before we, uh, before we go into public comment, we're gonna take the pictures now because we know they have to go to work. Officers. I got shades down?
All yours, all of my yours.
Tin.
Yeah.
Corporal, front and center.
You know, pushing you around already. Ms. Livia Smith.
And the three-minute warning is still on, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You know, this has been a good day here at council, and it's been all positive. And I hope as we go into the next season, next called, the year twenty twenty-three, that we will keep a positive thought in our mind. They say this is the season to be jolly, but as I read different things in the newspaper, it looks like the tales of two cities. And if anybody who's ever read that understands what I'm talking about. I, I, I see in articles, and I see that, um, individuals are, are, are claiming that the receiver is the savior for the city. And he is not, um, I seen personally, and as it states in this article that, um, I am certain the receiver was sent here to leave us in better shape than they found us. And this was a statement from Councilman Roots. They've been here for a while. They've been here more than two years. They knew the city was in financial situation at that particular time, but did not bring anything to help. So I cannot see their, their purpose of being to bring us in better conditions. I also see that the, that the new guy being here only one year states that we need professional management. Well, you have to be here to manage the situations that's, that is at hand. And when I read the, uh, third-class city code and the home recharger, my understanding that is set up that the council and mayor are heads of departments, so to, to make a change for the day-to-day operations, that means you must change those two documents, and until that happens, that it continues the way it is. So I'm saying to say this, compromise is something that goes between bodies of people. And in order to compromise, you have to understand the state of the city as it has been, and the years that it has taken the city to get to the point that they are, especially with their pensions, that has been something that's been ongoing for years, and it was not from the current government. So I just want folks to realize, when you read stuff, and you folks who are social blogs and, and social media type of people, please read things in its entirety before you make decisions. Stop basing things on your personal feelings about people, and look at the totleness that is going to be the positive group for the City of Chester. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Jones, I said, Ivy Jones, Ms. Jones, could I have your address?
One-two-zero-seven.
Powell.
Come on. No, not yet, but I'm, I'm just saying. One-three-seven.
It's Chester Township.
I know, I know. Okay. Mr. Sims? Yes, sir.
Peace, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Andre Sims. I am Executive Director of nonprofit Day One, Not Day Two. Native of the city of Chester. Rode here with the Toby Farms, Chester High, Smedley, back when it was Smedley before the STEM. And I'm back to help my city. Right now, there's a crisis and it's not the ones that the news feeds us. They love to paint our young people as criminals and as, you know, the problem. But the problem is that our schools are underfunded. The problem is we don't have mental health resources. The problem is we are divided and still experiencing ancestral trauma as a people. And we're villainized for it. We're criminalized for it. We're ostracized for it. And that's what we're seeing in the streets right now. Unfortunately, I had to go through that path to learn. I spent eight years in prison. My first introduction to the system was through Lama Detention Center, where I was thrown away. I was told I was trash. I was told I was nothing. And I, I, I took on that label and that led me to become the criminal that they painted me out to be. Since then, I've been working diligently. I taught myself history, art history, the real history. I've, you know, grown spiritually and now it's time to give this back to my people. And so, I'm concerned. I have to ask for everybody in this room. Right now, there are meetings every third Tuesday with the Board of Managers and they're planning to reopen Lama Detention Center under a new name. They say it's a new name, new administration. And they're spending millions and millions of dollars to open this detention center, while at the same times, our schools are severely underfunded. You know, we don't have teachers in classrooms. We don't have books. We don't have programming. And so, to me, when we're people, when we're a nation that on average spends thirteen thousand dollars to educate a kid compared to the two hundred thousand that we spend to incarcerate a kid, you know, that shows where our priorities lie and what we're investing in. And so, I want help. I'm coming asking for help. We have a town hall meeting, January twelfth, where we invite the community out. It's going to be at the Keystone Wellness Center Opportunity Center in Chester. That's going to be six-thirty PM. You're going to hear from people who were directly impacted by these type of facilities. And we ask that you come bearing, you know, solutions and bearing your perspective because the solutions are going to come from us. It's going to come from the people. And I also ask from the council, from the mayor, y'all help us set up these programs that we need in the city. We have, you know, a couple of years before that facility is built. And we're trying to make a case for saying we need to divest from the criminal justice system and invest directly into the communities. And so, my nonprofit offers a slew of programming from emotional intelligence. We have a program that pays young artists to create socially responsible music as a way to combat, you know, the culture of crime and what you're hearing now. We have so many different programs. We want to start participatory defense hubs where we're helping in restorative justice programs, where we're diverting people from the system. But we need support. We need help. And so, I'm not going to over time. Please come out. We're passing out flyers. And yeah, please help. So.
Mr. Sims, the information that is being passed out now that has contact information for your organization?
This is just about the town hall. I will write my contact information down to give it to you personally.
When is the town hall again?
The town hall is January twelfth, Keystone Wellness and Opportunity Center, Chester, six-thirty.
Thank you.
I saw Mr. Sims on the news. It was this morning, I believe, and about his organization and what you're.
I, I saw you on the news this morning. That's, you know, I asked you, were you on TV? And I'm very much interested in finding out more about your organizations. And I like to be supportive because I do believe that we need to have those programs. And there are some programs around. So, maybe what you might need to do is, you know, maybe we can meet with you, you know, to tell you about some of the things that are going on, you know, and then, you know, hear from you about what you're proposing as well. I'm very much interested and I will see you on the twelfth.
I've seen him on TV.
If I'm, if I'm not there on the twelfth, it's not because I don't want to be there. It's my birthday and January twelfth, that's sixteen and a half, sure. Ms. Jones.
Mayor. Tax pay.
Good morning, Council. I just want to apologize ahead of time because I know nothing about doing this. I came to, to the building today to ask for a meeting with the mayor because it's something that's very time-sensitive. I, I previously was a property manager for a young lady. And there's a, there's a threat coming from, I'm not sure it's from Ellen I or it was from the new owner. But I got a phone call from somebody in L I on Monday. Although Ellen, Ellen I already knows I'm not involved with the property anymore, they called me to tell me that they're going to be putting a notice on the people's door and they had to leave by Friday. So, I'm like, you know, first, why are you calling me? And second of all, why are you telling these people to get out by Friday? And they haven't spoken to anybody in three months about who owners are because we've been going back and forth with Ellen I to get help. So, even though I'm trying to stay out of it, I'm constantly getting contact because I'm their only connection to anything they don't know their rights.
Is this a property in the city?
Yes, it's a property on Ninth Street. It's three eighteen, East Ninth Street. The painful, and I'm trying not to cry because the painful part for me is this particular owner, we parted ways because I saw something that she did in another building that I wasn't managing. And she's doing the same tactics now. And, and Ellen I knew before, they knew when she did it the last time. And it sounds like, I'm not trying to attack Ellen I. I'm not trying to do that. Because they've been nice to us and everything, but I'm not understanding where on Monday, do you call somebody and say, we're going to kick ten people out on Christmas Eve that had no notice of anything, who've done nothing wrong, but tried to get help? So, that upsets me and I'm sorry. And like I said, I really want to stay out of it, but these people don't know their rights, so they keep calling me. And I'm the one that put them in there, so I feel responsible for them. We already been in contact with the news media. They're supposed to be coming out tomorrow. I just thought it was only fair for me to come to you and give you opportunity to see if there's anything that you can do, you know, to, to come up with some arrangement. So, these people are not, they still haven't had notice. And I got the phone call on Monday. And to be honest, I don't want to sound crazy, but another tenant called me from another building and said a notice went on their building. So, it's apparent like they put the notice on the wrong door just so that they can say they gave those people notice. That's what it's looking like to me, but I could be wrong. But they noticed that Ellen I said they were putting it. They put it on another building. So, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I'm not going to pull the Christmas thing. I just know these people ain't doing that and they all got their rent. They just don't know who are charging, who to pay their rent to.
Ms. Ms. Jones, let me, let me, let us speak with Mr. Collins.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
All right. Counsel, uh, Councilman Williams?
I want to get her name and number. I want to get that young lady's name and number so you can talk to her.
Okay, ready? Yes, yes. Councilman Roots?
Good morning. Fabulous council meeting today. I just want to thank the people involved in the Toys for Tots program that we had last week. It was so well-attended. It was a two-day event. I want to also thank my two commissioners over there. Commissioner Gretzky, Commissioner Rigby. They both applied for grants with the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority. I hope I said that right. I always get it wrong. But that county authority okayed that each the fire and the police department would receive twenty-five hundred dollars, which they turned directly to the Toys for Tots program. As a result of that, it resulted in the purchase of forty-nine bicycles that was giving out, that was given out in addition to all the other toys that was received in the bags. The authority that I just mentioned, I just saw an article in today's Daily Times about Harrah's and how internet gaming is virtually saving the casino. There was a seventy-three percent increase in online gambling right there at the casino. One percent of that money goes to the county, which is distributed throughout the county. And I will say, I, I meant to do the tally, but more than one hundred and fifty thousands of, of those dollars have, have come to the city of Chester. And as long as I'm on that board, we're going to continue to direct money to the city of Chester. But for the toys, that was most important. The kids had big smiles on their faces. Bikes have been given away all across the city this year. Uh, there was one event earlier that the Chester Upland Soccer Group did. They called it a bike rodeo, uh, maybe last month, first week of November down at the waterfront. We gave away bikes. Uh, how many other, there were just bikes all over the city this year. And I see that there's going to be an event tomorrow right here on Avenue Estates at MJ Freed, where more bikes are going to be given away. So, it's definitely the spirit of giving. That's what Chester's all about. I'm really proud to have been a part of that.
I have anything. Happy holidays.
Happy holiday, everybody. I just pray that you will have a joyful, blessed holiday. And I pray for peace and protection over you, your families, my colleagues on council. It's always been a pleasure working with you and I appreciate your support of me and my department, the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, our solicitor for your support and my team in the Public Works Department. I appreciate all that you've done and how you've supported me down through the years. I've been a member of council for thirteen years. I've won four terms uh, by the grace of God. And I continue to work and serve the community because I love Chester and its people. Wasn't born here. I was raised here. I came here in fifty-nine. And I know I'm dating myself, but I don't have a problem with age. I just want to say that I too had a concern about comments made by Councilman Roots in the newspaper. And I mentioned it to you on deliberative, but I also want the community to know that you started January of this year, your first year of your first term as councilperson. And I remember the day you were sworn in. We all pledged our support. I heard the mayor tell you that he has an open-door policy. And if there's anything that you need by way of support, that his door was always open to you. We all, we all felt and feel that way. I don't think there's been anything that you've asked for in terms of a need for your department that we haven't agreed to and voted on. And I just would like to ask that in moving forward, that if the, you, you said that you're, you're the new kid on the block and you've been here for a year and, you know, you've noticed all the bad decisions. You, you've not commented on anything good that has happened. You, you, you said that we make bad decisions. That's what you said. We, we make bad decisions and you've noticed that. Uh, you didn't say what the decisions were, but you said we've made some bad decisions. We're not perfect. I've worked under other administrations and no one's perfect. But what we all tried to do under the Butler administration, Lender, Kirkland, we've all strived to work together. And we don't always agree. I don't always agree with the mayor, Mayor Kirkland. But what we do, we have conversations. I go to him. I talk to him. So, I'm asking if you, well, it would be nice if you would come to us if you have anything, any concerns with any decisions that we're making, you know? And your compromise that you wrote up, that was a compromise after you saw the rebuttal from mayor and council to the receiver about some modifications that he wants to make to his original plan about the day-to-day operation. You disagreed with what we said and you wrote up some other things. And then, uh, when we disagreed with what you said, instead of us sitting down having a conversation, I don't remember having, we had a conversation maybe afterward, after you had gone to the receiver, you know, and talked to him about your modifications. It seems like there's a lot of discussion between you and the receiver, maybe more with him than with us. That's just my opinion. I could be wrong. I don't know. But in terms of the receiver, when he first came here, it was with a promise from he and D C E D, the board, from the state who sent him here, that there would be an amount of money to help us out in the amount of fifteen million dollars. Am I correct? We've never seen that money, but let me tell you what we've seen. We've seen a lot of consultants being hired by the D C E D and the receivers team who come here and they've been meeting with us, asking us questions about the condition and different things that we were doing in our respective departments. Myself and my public works director and supervisor, we've always been cooperative, just like the others in the other department. We've given the direction that we cooperate. We don't always agree, but what they did was send people who were making money based on, you know, they'll come and meet with us on a weekly basis and then we give them the information and then they write it up in a report and give it back to the receiver. Well, I think we should have gotten some of that money because we told them what was going on. I would have liked to have seen more help coming from the receiver, but ever since he's been here, he's been here in an effort to tear down the current administration. And I don't think it's always professional. I think it's personal. That's my opinion. And he wants to change our form of government. He wants to take away the administrative duties of the mayor and council, which means that we, in order for me to get something done, I'll have to go communicate with my public works director, who then in turn will communicate with the COO. And then the COO goes and communicate with the receiver. Well, hell, what am I here for? Because I know you, the community. When you call me, you want me to get an answer or fix it? You don't want me to have to go through a chain of people. I.
Excuse me, excuse me. Yes.
You want an answer and you, you don't want to wait a long time. Because I know some people in here now, when you come to me and I have a reputation for being responsive, have there been some things that have fallen through the cracks? Couple of things. And when I find out about it, I go right back to it. My, my staff and I, we're on point, just like the other people here in, in, in the city hall. Our, our people in city hall, some of them are your relatives and friends who have been working here for years. Now, all of a sudden, we're incompetent. And anytime we, uh, the receiver goes out for a, a position, you know, we had to hire a company to scout for us when we have intelligent, educated. to scout for us when we have intelligent, educated, well-bred people right here in Chester. I think we, we wanna give our people an opportunity at these jobs. And just because it's a COO or CFO or something like that, we have people in Chester who are, who would be qualified, at least get an interview, give you an opportunity to come in and interview. But they look to the outside and all of them are from outside of Chester too. Go figure. So I've always been supportive. I will continue to be supportive of my colleagues. And I would like to have the same consideration and respect and not be accused of making bad decisions. I'm not perfect. I don't profess to be per- perfect, but I am good at what I do. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Um, I apologize. Um, Mr. Salim, you had signed up. They brought that to my attention. I apologize. Come on, I apologize.
Good morning, mayor, council, the good people who come and the good people who are not here, you know, uh, the good people. Inshallah, God willing, I would make this brief, I don't want to go with the horn, there was. But, but this is, um, the answer here is very simple, actually. Once we know what, uh, we're doing with this simplicity. We have gotten all into com- complicated, uh, over the years and all complications and so forth and so on. But let me just, uh, just make one note of some things that might be of some help here for us. It's very beneficial, very helpful. The professionalism. My name is Amin, I'm two, uh, Salim, excuse me. Professionalism from man and simplicity from God. So we have one. Excuse me. Over the time, they profession, profession, they wanna profess and wanna promote what man do in or what man done. He goes up to the sky, he said, the, the sky is the limit. And he cannot go any further, but this is the pro- uh, professionalism. Now the simplicity starts new. It comes from God and you raise up. You raise up, you raise up, you raise up past the limit of professionalism. Sky is the limit. We wanna go connect with our Lord. Simplicity, God, simple, simplicity, simplicity. So one is coming down, but they still trying to prom- promote professionalism, profession, profession, profession. Some is simple raising up, one's coming down and one is going up. And God said, uh, when I breathe into him in my spirit, the simple man bow you down to him. So we certainly want to be the, uh, God breathing to a, him with, of, of his spirit. And the simplicity, the bottom line is that we have to rethink. We have to think again. The simplicity or the, uh, pro- professionalism have to rethink as it's coming down, coming down. And the simplicity of life, God, wait, is raising up, we have to rethink. So we're gonna meet one now. God said, uh, when I breathe into him in my spirit, bow you down. Or bow you down or fall you down. Well, but thi- this is gonna happen. We got to rethink. We got to come together, rethink. Come together, rethink. So the bottom line, inshallah, uh, I want to say something about the Christmas thing or the children, all I want for Christmas is my two frontier. And that front, two frontier, we gotta change all of it. We got all this mess in the sky. We gotta come down, some says it raises up again. And those two frontier, God said, have I not created you with the two falacies of seeing and hearing? Those, now we wanna bring these back to true form. We don't want all the happy and professional, all that. Inshallah, God willing, and we can save some money by giving our children what is, is theirs and so forth. God said, pay your debts. Inshallah, I went over and I thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Salim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rigby.
Good morning. Uh, just a brief announcement, uh, on behalf of the Director of Public Safety and the Mayor and Council. Uh, we do have a announcement that our press secretary will put out with the, uh, upcoming weather forecast we have, uh, for the, uh, holiday weekend. It's gonna be really cold this weekend, uh, maybe some wind to contend, uh, contend with as well. Uh, if we have some folks that are, uh, a little less fortunate and don't have a place to go, we have a, uh, partnership with the Salvation Army. And, uh, again, it's on there. You reach out to, uh, the police department, the fire department, um, and if you can't get taken care of, we'll make sure you get taken care of. Uh, so that being said, uh, also I wanna, I, I, I just ask that folks try to practice some safety this weekend, uh, with the weather. Uh, some of us, we may know if you know somebody that doesn't have heat or something that's going on there, uh, we just don't wanna have any tragedies. So, uh, in that, I'll close and Merry Christmas. And, uh, my hat's off to the Commissioner today for his, uh, big day. All right, thank you.
Question. When, uh, for those persons that we see out on the street, um, how do you handle that, you know?
So, so to, to be.
And it's cold.
Yeah, to be clear, and, and it's something we're challenged with all the time. Our officers and our firefighters, uh, we ask if folks wanna go in. Uh, oftentimes they don't wanna go in, uh, so we can't make them go in.
Right.
Uh, unless there was a state of an emergency, uh, and we were in a, a much different weather pattern than we're going to be in this weekend. Uh, so that being said, we urge them to go in. We try to do that, uh, but we can't force folks. Uh, that, and, uh, if there is a point there where, uh, we don't have enough spots at Salvation Army, we have some, uh, connections at the county and we'll, we'll get everybody some help.
Chester's an authority as well with the community.
We do, with our kind of my, our, our backup, uh, right now, so I think we'll be okay with Salvation Army at this point. Uh, it's not as widespread as maybe when we do our heat emergencies. But if we need more, we'll, we'll make sure everybody gets taken care of. But if somebody's not taken care of, you can rest assured the Commissioner and I'll make sure that gets taken care of. But again, we can't, we just ask that they go in, but, uh, we can't make anybody do anything they don't wanna do.
Thank you. We always have your best interest at heart.
Yeah, a- and again, nine-one-one, so, I mean, if someone needs, uh, some assistance, especially over the holiday weekend. As, as much as minor as it may be, uh, we ask that you call nine-one-one and we'll sort it out from there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, uh, just real briefly, I, um, you've heard a lot today. Um, and I, I just wanna make some comments on, uh, some of the things that have been written by our receiver and Mr. Kapoor. And I guess directly pertaining to, to myself. It said that I, I guess had some type of Cadillac or Mercedes, uh, health plan from, coming from the city. And it bothers me when half truths or blatant lies are told, especially when pertains to me. What it did not tell you is this, for number one, I don't put together the health plans for a city. It's not my department. Number two, for four years, I never accepted a health plan for the city. Number three, I've worked in the House of Representatives for twenty-four years. I have, uh, real nice health plan coming from the state. So I, 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 it really bothers me, and I guess sometimes they throw stuff up against the wall to see what's gonna stick. That won't stick. Those type of things bother me. It bothers me when it looks as though mayor and council are not being cooperative or working with the receiver. When he first got here, I invited him into my office. I shared with him the Chester Water Authority plan that I've been working on for two and a half years. The Chester Water Authority. I said, this is our way out. And this was not selling the Water Authority. This was working along with the Water Authority. And I placed it in his hand. Copies, if anyone would like them. I placed it in his hand. Shared with him the conversations I had with Aqua and with American Water. And those plans were very, uh, financially lucrative. And I asked him, four hundred and ten, four hundred and thirty million dollars. That should be able to help us out tremendously here in the city of Chester. He walked away with both of those plans and ideas. I willingly provided him with those. But now we find ourselves in court and him saying, it's not enough. What I would like to know, what is enough? Is that plain and simple? Tell me what's enough. It's like you're going, uh, someone trying to borrow some money from you. And you're saying, what do you need? And I'll keep asking that question. What is enough? He talks about the IRS problem, or he talked about the IRS problem. They met in my office. I bought them there so that they might hear from the person from the IRS. And the person on the phone from the IRS said, okay, we've been having this issue and that issue. If you clear up this and clear up that in the finance department, because all of this money that we're talking about is simply penalties, we will take the penalties away. Mr. Kapoor was in my office when we had that conversation. But to go and place stuff in the papers and in, on court documents saying that the city was, are gonna owe all this money, it's not true. It's not true. It's hard working with people when they, when, when you can't trust them and when they blatantly lie to you or on you. They bought a, they bought on board a CFO, Chief Financial Officer, whom I totally disagree with, and I disagree with it because I did my homework. I saw where this individual had their own IRS problems. I saw where this individual had their own financial problems. And I saw where this individual also had financial problems when it came to a charter school that she was Chief Financial Officer at. And the charter school failed, collapsed financially. And I pleaded with him, please don't do this. Did it anyway. And for the first time, long as I've been here, we got jammed up in our, with our payroll. We missed payroll. Can you imagine missing the payroll for police officers, firefighters, and plu- other employees here in the city? That have to pay their bills, that have to pay child support, that have to pay whatever. We missed the payroll. Not once, but twice. Because he didn't want to listen to reason. Then the same individual walked off the job and was not reprimanded. How many you can walk off a job and still have that job when you go back? And so these are the type of things that we're, we're dealing with here, trying to, trying to right the ship. And for, and one, one last thing is a very good friend of mine, when I, I'm, I'm over the police department. And I was out for a few days. I was away for a few days and I came back. And a very dear friend of mine, matter of fact, the first female police officer in the history of Chester. She was our chief of staff over the police department. I come back and she's the COO. A position she never held, never aspired to hold. But she was appointed to that position by the receiver. And it was very upsetting to me because I'm like, there was no conversation with myself. And so I had to do something I did not want to do. I had to terminate the individual because he was in my department. She and I later talked and once again, I'm in court again, and the judge said that the mayor has the authority and the right to terminate the individual. After some discussion, I, I brought her back because he didn't wanna, she's a good friend. She's a good friend and she's a good worker. Now, she's in what I call forced retirement. Forced retirement. These are the things we're dealing with and, a- and it troubles me because many of the persons who should be in place in this city, in, employed in this city, are Chester residents that the receiver basically said, go home. And brings in his own. Now, we're gonna, we, we're gonna be in court, probably be in court more times than none. And we probably could use that time and that money to better our city. It's unfortunate. I don't know what the receiver makes. I don't know what his team make. I do know that they have an extremely large budget. That money could be used to help this city. Our goal is to continue to work together to make sure that we move our community forward and we help Chester residents. Say it again. We help Chester residents. We have some good, talented persons here. And I hope that you will make yourselves available. I'm gonna do a series of town hall meetings. And in those town hall meetings, I will be talking about, uh, our progress here in this city. Progress. Not this court stuff and not this crazy stuff and not the misleading stuff. But we're gonna talk about our progress here in this city. Because if you keep telling a child that he's, he or she is no good, that they're worthless, that they're meaningless, they'll eventually believe that of themselves. You will never, ever hear me talk down this community. It will not happen. Been here all my life. I love this community. I raised my kids in this community, or I raised my grandkids in this community. It will not happen. One of the proudest moments of my life was being able to, was, was when Philadelphia, council person from Philly, president of council, and some of his colleagues came here to Chester and said, how did you and your council members, how did y'all reduce crime like that in the city of Chester? By sixty-seven percent. We told them by partnerships, working together. Sixty second, and guess what? Sixty percent is not good enough. We wanted it to be a hundred percent. That's when we'll be extremely happy. So I wanted to share that with you. Um, thank you for being here today. Have a blessed Christmas. Have a great, uh, new year. Uh, love on one another and, uh, I wear sixteen and a half shirt. I like cuff links. Just in case you wanna buy some Christmas gift, uh, Dr. Hunter. This meeting is now adjourned. This meeting is now adjourned.